Good evening, everybody. Welcome to downtown Temecula, to the Temecula City Council meeting. Today is September the 10th. Good to see everybody out here in the audience and at home. Our prelude music, there was none, so I was hearing things. What was that? Oh, there you go. We're gonna start off our meeting with a flag salute given by Councilmember Swank, and actually, let's start with an invocation by our city manager, and then the flag salute by Councilmember Swank. Please stand.
Could you please stand? Please bow your head. Dear Heavenly Father, we just give you thanks for this day. We give you thanks for the opportunity to convene and do the business of the city. Lord, I just pray and lift up the people of Temecula. I pray for safety and wellness. I pray for wisdom and discernment for all city staff, as well as the city council and the decisions that will arrive here tonight. I pray, Lord, for our first responders, keep them safe, out of harm's way, and we ask your blessings and continue hand on the city of Temecula. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Will you all please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless you. Please be seated. Madam City Clerk, I have some distinguished colleagues here on the dais. Could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Edwards?
I'm here.
Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Swank?
I'm here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Mayor Nigard?
Is in the house. I always like to see our government students in the audience, and just like to see who's here. I always like to inquire, where are the Pumas tonight? Pumas are in the house, looking good. How about the Golden Bears? All right, the Golden Bears are repping. It's okay. What about the Wolf Pack?
Uh-oh.
Okay, I think tonight it goes to the Pumas. Glad to see you all here today, and so if you have any questions of the council, you're certainly welcome to put in a speaker's card, or stick around and talk to us after the meeting. Like to see you here. Now's the time for presentations and proclamations. First, I'd like to call Eagle Scout Sean R. Bishop and family up to the podium. Come on, Sean.
I know, I've never seen so many badges.
Sean, Vice Mayor Stewart is gonna read a proclamation to you, and then we're gonna ask you a few things.
All right.
Here, go ahead, and he's gonna read it to you there.
Sean R. Bishop from...
Can we get the microphone at the podium on?
Not yet.
Hello?
There it is.
Okay. Sean R. Bishop of Troop 384, we congratulate Sean R. Bishop for his achievement on receiving the rank of Eagle Scout, which is the highest achievement earned in scouting. We are proud of Sean's accomplishment and wish him continued success in his promising and bright future.
Sean, congratulations. Come on up to the podium, young man. Come on up to the microphone, and we have a few traditions here. Over the years, we've recognized quite a few Eagle Scouts. It seems like Temecula keeps putting them out. So tell us about your public service project that led to you being an Eagle Scout.
Yeah, of course. My Eagle project, French Valley Airport, is a place called Wings and Rotors Air Museum. My Eagle project there was, they needed seating for students. They'd always have them sit on the hangar floor for the student classes, and I made three five-foot-long benches, very nice, of course with my dad's help and my parents' help. Made three benches. I partitioned off part of the flight hangar for a classroom setting area, and they put in some chairs and tables and flight simulators in there for the students. And I also gave them a whiteboard that they could use as a movie screen. So that was my Eagle project.
What made you do that? Did you have an interest in aviation?
Yeah, of course. My dad was in the Navy for four years, and then he went to work at Robinson Helicopter, and now he's working at PSI Labs Instruments, and that's always interested me. I've been wanting to be a pilot since I was very young, and I have a personal interest in helicopters.
Excellent. That's good to hear. With that certificate, there's a pin that goes along with it. Do you see it there?
Yeah.
We only give that pin here at the city of Temecula to Eagle Scouts. So over the years, maybe, I think, there's maybe, how many, Mary Ann, 50 to 100 that we've given away?
Yeah.
Really, over the past 15 years, and we just, we think it's pretty special, and we want you to think it's special, too. We're so proud of the work you do and all the scouts in the neighborhood, in Temecula neighborhoods. So thank you, and congratulations. And Mom and Dad, now's the time for photos. So you know what? You're welcome to take as many as you want. You know, we'll come down and take some photos with you, too, if you'd like. Mayor Protem, why don't you, you get in there with them? And Mom and Dad, take a picture of the screen behind us. That's always kinda cool.
Oh, that looks good.
Sean, we're proud of you, buddy. Hope to see you around. We have a proclamation regarding Constitution Week. Is Bonnie Hayash here? Bonnie, looks like you brought your friends with you as well. Everybody, come on up. Good to see you, as always. Mayor Protem Stewart has a proclamation for you.
Okay, the city of Temecula proclamation, it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the 232nd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities. And the Constitution of the United States, the guardian of our liberty, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and September 17th, 2019, marks the 232nd anniversary of the framing of the Constitution by the Constitutional Convention. And it is fitting and proper to accord official, proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of the proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week. I, Michael S. Nigard, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Temecula, hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd to be Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals, the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained.
Congratulations, lady. Would you, ladies, would you like to say something, Bonnie?
Yes, I would.
Please. Come on up to the microphone there. Pull it down there, so...
Yes, for short people.
You said it, I did not.
Thank you, Mayor Nigard and City Council members, for acknowledging the importance of our message of our Constitution Week. The Luceno Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution, proudly receives this proclamation in honor of the 232nd anniversary of the framing of our Constitution. The U.S. Constitution is the oldest constitution still in effect in the world today, and is the basic document of our republic. It protects the individual's liberties and freedoms through written law. During Constitution Week, September 17th through 23rd, we encourage citizens to take the time and study the Constitution, know what it says and doesn't say, and know what your rights are. Appreciate this significant document and that our founding fathers have given to us. Constitution Week honors our ancestors and the framework of the government that they have given us. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie, and thank you, ladies, for being here tonight as well.
And again, we will be at the gazebo at the museum on September 17th, ringing in one more year of Constitution Day, and I believe it's, if I remember correctly, it's Councilwoman Edwards' birthday. So the bells are for the Constitution and not for Councilwoman Edwards. But thank you.
Thank you very much. We can ring a bell, too. Okay. How about a proclamation regarding Purple Heart City? Is Len Terranetti here? Did I say it right, sir?
Well...
All right. You'll correct me here in a moment. Mayor Protem, would you read the proclamation?
All right. The City of Temecula proclamation, the citizens of the city of Temecula have great admiration for the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selfishly, selfishly served their country and this community in the armed forces and have borne the brunt of the battle. And the veterans have paid the high price of freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And the contributions and sacrifices of men and women of the city of, from the city of Temecula who served in the armed forces have been vital in defending the hard-won freedoms and liberties of our Constitution that we treasured by our citizens. And the city of Temecula welcomes our wounded and disabled veterans back into their community with gratitude and support. And many citizens of our community have been awarded the Purple Heart Medal in recognition of being wounded while engaged in combat with an enemy force. A singular meritorious act is essential service. I, Michael S. Nigard, on behalf of the city of Temec, the city council in the city of Temecula hereby proclaim the city of Temecula to be Purple Heart City in honor of the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect the freedoms enjoyed by all Americans, and to remember and recognize veterans who, who are recipients of the Purple Heart Medal by declaring September 10th, 2019, as Purple Heart Day in Temecula.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Len, please, would you like to say a few words?
The authors of these proclamations never have to say them out loud.
That's right.
Thank you very much. This is kind of an annual thing that you do, and we're very happy, those of us who wear the Purple Hearts, of the support that your community gives us. You know, September is a month of sacrifices for service. If you think that tomorrow, September 11th, the sacrifices that our first responders made, rushing into the Twin Towers and trying to get people out, and then all the military personnel who have subsequently been engaged overseas in combat because of that horrible incident. Next Friday is National Prisoner of War and Missing in Action Day. That, in case you don't know this, the, if you're a POW or an MIA, you are also entitled to a Purple Heart. So those are our Purple Heart brothers. And the last Sunday of September is Gold Star Day. Gold Star families are those who have lost a loved one, a close family member, who was serving on active duty. It may not have been in combat, it could have been an automobile accident or something, but there's still a sacrifice, still a loss while serving their country. So the fact that you take the time to remember this and to educate our young people about it is very important to all of us, and we appreciate it.
Len, I wanna maybe take a liberty and perhaps ask you something personal. We have a lot of students here, and we don't talk about Purple Hearts too much. Could you maybe explain what that is? And if you're inclined, how did you get yours?
Okay. If you're serving on active duty and you're in combat, and the combat action causes you to be injured, wounded by enemy action, you're entitled to a Purple Heart. The Purple Heart is the least-wanted, most coveted medal for most of us in the military because it says you were in combat. A lot of the other awards that are given are not necessarily because you were in combat. Of course, Silver Star and Bronze Star with V for valor, and our Medal of Honor, and some of the other awards for the service and valor above and beyond the call of duty are well. But the Purple Heart, you don't have to write up anything. All you have to do is have medical treatment for your wounds, and they're issued at the lowest level, usually at a battalion or shipboard level. So some are pinned on pillows, mine was, and some are mailed to you because you weren't there, and some have a ceremony. But it means, and the other members of the military have recognized, okay, you went in combat, you were shot at. You didn't sit behind the desk and push papers during a war, you were there. So it's fairly important. And when we return back into our civilian world, it means a lot to our families and others like yourselves because it kinda says it all, so...
Thank you for standing in for all the Purple Heart recipients here tonight, and thank you for your service.
And thank you for the parking place.
You're welcome. And our last, oh, go ahead, let's get some photos there. And our last proclamation tonight is regarding National Manufacturing Day, and I see Christine Dampko there in the audience. Christine, come on down. And all you manufacturers, hi there. Who do we have?
Introduce yourselves.
Who's here tonight?
And what they do.
Yeah.
I'm Bob Schur. I'm the general manager for Attention Envelope. I'm also the co-chair of the Southwest California Manufacturing Council, which is affiliated with the Chamber of Commerce, but stands separate from the Chamber, but representing all the manufacturers here in, here in the city.
Great, and who else do we have here?
Hello, my name is Arun Sinha, and I work for Opto22. We're a manufacturer here in Temecula, and we make systems to automate factories. So we're a manufacturer, as well as we make products to help other manufacturers automate their factories. And the company's been in Temecula since 1991. Hello, Councilwoman Edwards. So thank you.
You know, little known to a lot of our citizens is we have a full bore manufacturing community here in Temecula. It's, it's pretty cool, and it employs a lot of people. Could you go ahead and read the proclamation, Mayor Protem Stewart?
All right. The City of Temecula proclamation, the city of Temecula recognizes the Southwest California Manufacturing Council for their efforts in providing a forum of collaboration and best practices between local manufacturing community. And the city of Temecula applauds SCMC initiatives and commitment to the community by creating an internship, internship program aimed at employing, training, mentoring, and educating Temecula youth and exposing them to local manufacturing sector. And the manufacturing industry is a critical component to Temecula's ecosystem. In 2019, a total of 234 manufacturing companies employed over 5,100 people, and in 2017, the average manufacturing worker in the United States earned $84,832 annually, including pay and benefits, compared to the average worker in all industries who earned $66,847. And taken alone, manufacturing in the United States would be the eighth-largest economy in the world, with $2.18 trillion in added value for manufacturing in 2017. Only seven other nations, including the United States, would rank higher in terms of their gross domestic product. And the, and according to the National Association of Manufacturing, for every $1 spent in manufacturing, another $1.82 is added to the economy, the highest multiplier effect of any economic sector. And according to the National Association of Manufacturers, 4.6 million manufacturing jobs will likely be needed over the next decade. I, Michael S. Nigard, on behalf of the city of Temecula, hereby proclaim October 4th, 2019, National Manufacturing Day.
Good job, guys. Yeah. And Mary Ann would like to say a few words.
Well, I'd like to recognize you on behalf of Temecula Valley Unified School District because I have the privilege of working with both of these gentlemen and many others from our manufacturing sector, and they are very active in helping our students work internships. They provide advice, as an advisory committee to the CTE staff so that we stay current and we know what kind of lingo to use, the proper language and the proper equipment that we staff our, or that we place in our classrooms. And so manufacturing is huge in Temecula, and it's a huge part of career technical education. So on behalf of the district, thank you for all that you do and the time that you give to the district and to our students.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Tell the, tell the council, greetings from our council to your council. Thanks.
Thank you.
You betcha. All right. Mr. Mayor.
Christine, still there.
Oh.
Sorry. To conclude, we just have a one-minute video on manufacturing, and thank you to Jonathan, Chris, and Brandy for producing it.
Attention envelope, we make over 30 million envelopes a week.
Here at QC, we specialize in ventilation cooling for residential, commercial, industrial. Our whole-house fans, we make about 70,000 per year, and we can make one every 30 seconds on our assembly lines.
Here at Holso Manufacturing, we've been making personal protective equipment for industrial workers and first responders across the globe for over 72 years.
Here at Milgard, we manufacture over 9,000 windows and doors a week. We've been doing it since 1985 here in Temecula.
Here at Axion Water Technologies, we make the world's best reverse osmosis systems, and we ship them worldwide.
Here at Optoforms, we made lighting reflectors used in high-end applications like the light beam that comes out of the top of Luxor Hotel in Las Vegas, the Kennedy Space Center, Eiffel Tower in Paris, and hundreds of architectural lighting applications, and it's all made right here in Temecula.
We are made in Temecula.
Yeah. Gentlemen, I want to ask you one more question. If you can just quickly come back to the podium, it's just a question that occurred to me. We've seen a video here with many different manufacturers, and you could put your plant anywhere you want. Why here? Why Temecula?
Well, it's a great question. In fact, come Thanksgiving weekend, we're celebrating our 25th anniversary of being located here in Temecula. And it was somewhat serendipitous that we wound up here in Temecula because the company is actually based in Kansas City, and we had been located over in Santa Fe Springs. And as we were looking for a new facility, as we outgrew that, that facility, we met a guy who had built the building we're currently in on spec, and we hadn't given any thought to Temecula. And so when the ownership came out and looked around and saw what was here and what was possible in this community, they said, this is the place. And in fact, part of our celebration in November will be the people who are still with us, who moved with us 25 years ago, and there's 17 people who are out of the hundreds or so people we employ who are still here. And those people have long, have done very well here in Temecula. Their kids have grown up here, they, they have homes here, they've become, become an important part of the community, which wasn't gonna be possible in Orange County, wasn't gonna be possible anyplace else other than here in Temecula. And so we're very, very proud of our facility here and what we accomplish here in Temecula, and the fact that we're, we're able to be an important part of the community.
Thank you. I'd love to hear about Opto22, same question.
Absolutely. So, and Councilperson Edwards probably knows the story better than I do, but the company started in 1974 in Huntington Beach and moved to Temecula in 1991 or 1992, and probably over 100 employees shifted their families and their lives to Temecula. And one thing I can say that, and I had a talk with our CEO about this topic for a magazine article that was being written about us, which was the temptation to move manufacturing overseas, and why he has resisted for so many years. And the bottom line was, he believed in the community, he believed in the people, he wanted to keep the jobs here, and he also felt that, you know, as we've seen the pendulum swing in the past few years, that it's kind of been seen that the costs in doing that might be more than you would think they are, there's hidden costs, et cetera. So the company has remained in Temecula and has remained profitable and has helped the community keep people employed.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that story. Yes, go ahead.
If I could add one more thing, this morning, I had to take my wife down to a doctor's appointment down in San Diego County, and so I'm on the freeway at 5:30 this morning, and the traffic heading south was just unbelievable. And I felt like just putting up a sign and saying, you guys turn around, there's great jobs, great manufacturing jobs right here in Temecula, and that's part of what we're trying to do, is to get the word out that there's great jobs that are right here in town. Save the time, the commute time, work right here in Temecula.
Excellent. Thank you so much for that word as well. Go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, could I, could I say one other thing?
Of course you can.
To the young people in the audience, careers in manufacturing, a lot of young folks feel that it's dirty and it's not glamorous, but manufacturing is a wonderful career choice, and I encourage people to look into that, young people who are looking for a career path. And it's growing, and it's a very exciting work, and it's very interesting. So take a look at it if you're one of the young folks in the audience looking for a career path.
Great for that word, both of you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now it's the time in our meeting for public comments. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any public comments on non-agendized items. However, we do have one public comment on item number six and one public comment on item number 12. If you would like to take those now, we can play the video.
Item number six, hold on, and let's look at item number 12. We have one and one on each, right?
Correct.
Okay, hold on a second. Okay, let's go ahead and take them now. Go ahead and play the video.
Sean, attend the video, please.
Attention envelope, we make over 30 million, attention envelope.
Hello, my name's Jeff Kurtz. I'm general manager for Promenade Temecula. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. On those items, each speaker is limited to five minutes.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, let's take number six. Could you call the speaker for item number six?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the speaker is Bill Veal.
Hi, Bill.
My name is Bill, otherwise known as Dead Eye. I'm with the Old Town Temecula Gunfighters, and on their behalf, I'd like to invite everybody in the city of Temecula and outlying areas to the Western Days they were providing this weekend. There'll be old west reenactments with shootouts with blanks, there'll be a train, there'll be some music, a Civil War encampment, there'll be some crafts for the kids, and some historical characters that the, everybody can talk to. and some historical characters that the, everybody can talk to. And everything, I have, have to thank, we've been working closely with Dawn and Willow with the city. And I have to say, thank the city for putting up signs, warning people of gunfire, and also this event coming this weekend.
So, the event is this weekend?
This weekend, Saturday and Sunday, 10 to 5 and 10 to 3.
Beautiful. Thanks for, thanks for letting us know.
Thank you.
All right. Come back and let us know how the event went.
Pardon me?
Come back and let us know how the event went.
Oh, you bet.
All right.
Well, come out, come down and see us, too.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Madam City Clerk, let's call, you know, a quick question. Councilmember Swank, did you want to pull this item?
Yeah, let's pull 12, just, just for a brief comment.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Let's go ahead and pull it. Do you need a staff report or just a comment?
No, just a comment.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and give your comment, then we'll call the speaker.
You got it. So, I just wanted to sort of rewind about five or six years on this project. So this, the project is a pump track over at Ronald Reagan Sports Park. This all started with a group of residents that just came forward and wanted to build some hike, bike trails in Ronald Reagan. And, and then they had a little idea, they said, well, we'll build a pump track. And, and we started to think about it and go, well, maybe this could be something really big. This could be a really good amenity for the community. So, I just really want to say thanks to the community for sticking with us for, for the last few years while we got this right, because I do think that this is, this project, the way that we're doing it now is the right project for the, for that space. And then just thank you to staff for making that happen, from Public Works to TCSD to planning, everybody and every, all the hard work that went into this project. It is going to be a phenomenal asset for the community. Really excited about it.
And thank you for your involvement, council member. Can you please call the speaker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the one and only speaker is Rick Vander Linden.
Good evening, Rick.
Hello. So, my name is Rick Vander Linden, and my wife, Ann Vander Linden, and Sean. So, we're the owners of the bike shop in town here, and Sean's a mechanic, one of the, the best mechanics in town. So, we wanted to say thank you for the pump track. So, a pump track, for those who don't know, it's just a, kind of like a skate park, but for bicycles. And instead of pedaling, you, you pump your way around. You can pedal and pump. Wanted to say how big it is. At the bike shop, when we put a post out there, like, let's go do a donut ride, we get a few hundred people that say, yeah, maybe we'll think about it. Or let's go do a fix-your-tire clinic, we get a couple hundred. When we put a thing out there about the pump track, we get like the next day, 2,000 people saying, what's up? What's next? When is it, when is it going to happen? And they've been knocking on our door for months. We keep saying, next month. Okay, well, maybe it's not next month. It's two months, and it's going to be here. And so, we're all pumped for the pump track, because the community wants it. It's a great, the best thing about a pump track is it, it gives kids a place to go, stay off the video games and out of trouble. That way, they're out doing something. And so it's, and it's more than just the kids. There's adults doing it. There's dads bringing, that want to bring their, their kids. There's a whole race community here that races mountain bikes, and they use that as a, as a technique to develop their skill set. So it's, it's, it's a good family, healthy thing. And a lot of other cities around the country have them, and we don't. So now we're going to say we do, too. I don't know if you guys want to say anything?
Hello, my name is Sean Sampson, and I grew up in Temecula, and there was not a pump track or anything like that. There was a skate park, but you weren't allowed to ride bikes in it. And so we'd go and dig our own jumps and stuff and all the fields and whatnot. So, nice to have a place for everyone to go now. It's a place to go and be able to ride without any problems and, you know, have family events and stuff. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for speaking tonight. Okay, no more. All right, so no more public speakers? All right. Then I'm going to go ahead and, and read the consent calendar rules. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine.
Mr. Mayor, can we?
Oh, I skipped city council reports, but you know what? I'll go back to that. Let me finish the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one rule called vote. There'll be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Two, approve the action minutes of August 27, 2019. Three, approve the list of demands. Four, approve the sponsorship agreement with Valley of the Mist Quilt Guild for the Old Town Temecula Outdoor Quilt Show at the request of subcommittee members Mayor Protem Stewart and Councilmember Edwards. Five, approve the sponsorship agreement with Inland Valley Business and Community Foundation, doing business as TEDx for TEDx Temecula, at the request of subcommittee members Mayor Protem Stewart and Councilmember Edwards. Six, approve the sponsorship agreement with Old Town Temecula Gunfighters for Western Days 2019, at the request of subcommittee members Mayor Protem Stewart and Councilmember Edwards. Seven, approve the purchase of the fiscal year 2019-20 software support and maintenance for Tyler Technologies' suite of products. Eight, approve a sponsorship agreement with Trauma Intervention Program of Southwest Riverside County, Inc. for traumatic incident citizen support. Nine, approve an agreement with Ford of Chula Vista for the purchase of three 2020 Ford Ranger XL Super Cab trucks. Ten, approve an annual professional services agreement with Overland Pacific and Cutler LLC for property acquisition services for the Department of Public Works for fiscal years 2020 to 2024. Number 11, approve the agreement for consultant services with Mark Thomas and Company, Inc. for the I-15 congestion relief project, Public Works 19-02. Twelve, award a construction contract to American Ramp Company, Inc. for the construction of the Ronald Reagan Sports Park Pump Track, Public Works 18-04. Thirteen, award a construction contract with Onx Paving Company, Inc. for the pavement rehabilitation program citywide, Maraga Road, Yukon Road, and Lost Arena Way, Public Works Project 19-06. Fourteen, accept improvements and file the notice of completion for park restroom renovations, expansion, and ADA improvements. That's Public Works Project 17-06. I will take a motion.
Move approval.
Second. That was Councilmember Edwards, seconded by Mayor Protem Stewart. And while everybody casts their votes, young people, we do this all in one, because if we took them all individually, we'd be here till 2:00 in the morning, and they're routine. And that's why it's called the consent calendar. And that passes 5-0. Let's go to city council reports. Who's in the queue? Mayor Protem Stewart.
Okay, so we have yet another park that we've just redone. The Rotary Park over there in Old Town, right behind, or right next to the Boys and Girls Club off of Pujol. And we're having a ribbon cutting ceremony and reopening September 17th, so Tuesday, this next Tuesday, at 10:00 AM. So anybody who wants to attend and see the new park, it has a train theme. I don't know if you knew, but there used to be a train that went through Temecula for like a week. And it didn't last long. It was like 18 months totally. It got, tracks got washed out twice in like six months, so they, they nixed it. But there used to be a train that went right through there. So we, we actually themed this park after that, that train line. So, it's got some really cool features, as do all our new parks. I don't know if you've noticed, but all our parks have a theme to them now. They're not just a bunch of swing sets and a slide. It's, they all have themes, and they're really cool, and they're, they're literally a destination. So, this is one to add to the destination. So it's this Tuesday at 10:00 AM. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, okay. Well, let's see here. See where our agenda takes us next. All right, I'm going to recess the Temecula City Council meeting to the meeting of the Temecula Community Service District. And President Stewart, go for it.
And I will convene the Temecula Community Service District meeting. Madam Clerk, please note, we're all here. Are there any speakers? All right. So let's go on to the consent calendar. Item number 15, approve the action minutes of August 27, 2019. And item number 16, approve sponsorship agreement with Temecula Valley Women's Club for use of the community recreation center kitchen and multipurpose room.
Move consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote. All right, that passes 5-0. Do we have a director's report?
Yes, Mr. President. A few quick reminders. Please join us tomorrow at 6:30 PM at the Duck Pond for an evening of reflection, as we honor those who lost their lives, many while serving and protecting. 18 years ago, on September 11th. On Sunday, September 22nd, come on out to Ronald Reagan Sports Park for the Fit Fun Color Run. And that's a 5K race for the entire family. The adult run starts at 8:30 AM and the kids obstacle course at 10:00 AM. So register online at temeculaca.gov. And finally, get the latest information about health-related resources and products for children, families, seniors, and individuals with special needs at the Annual Health and Community Resource Fair. And that's located here at the Civic Center on Sat, oh, excuse me, on Saturday, September 28th, from 9:00 AM to noon. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. General manager?
Nothing further tonight, Mr. President.
All right, anything from the board of directors? Nope. All right, so I will adjourn this meeting of the Community Service District and hand it back over to the mayor.
Thank you. I'm going to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. And it looks like we're just about done for the evening. Let's go to commission reports. Let's go with Mr. Sullivan.
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Gary Watts, planning commissioner. Mr. Levine.
Of course I have something. So as you can see on your screens, we are in the process of refreshing our Community Services Master Plan, the purpose of which is to get public input on our city's programs and services. Essentially, what they like, what they'd like to change, what they'd like to expand, improve, create, et cetera, as our city evolves and grows. With help from our consultant RJM Design Group, we prepared an initial needs list for facilities, services, and programs, based on a citywide survey conducted over this past summer. In addition, we received input from groups and stakeholder interviews. We'll share all of this with our workshop participants and ask them to add any missing needs. And as you all know, council members are invited to attend the introductory portions in their district and stay as long as they would like. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Eric. Let's see, public safety report. Chris?
Good evening, sir. Temecula Fire Station's responded to over 800 calls for the month of August. And the safety tip for tonight is teach your children how to dial 911.
Thank you very much. Prime Minister?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Attorney General?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we had closed session items tonight. There are no reportable actions under the Brownack, but with respect to the real property matter involving the school district, Councilmember Edwards did not participate due to her particular position with the district.
Thank you very much. Well, young people, we have a dilemma. You're supposed to be here till 8 o'clock, and that's like 17 minutes from now. So what are we going to do about that?
Make a lead.
I'll tell you what. If I can get three, maybe four of you to just come on up to the podium, or more, tell us what you like about Temecula. Two words, three words, four words, then we're all out of here. Sound like a plan? Sound like a plan? Come on, it's no big deal. Let's do it. Come on up, come on up. It's, it's, it's no big deal. We want to hear from you.
There's one.
Actually.
There's two.
Come on up.
Making the sacrifice for everybody.
I am, I am so, come, just come on up to the podium, one right after the other. And I am so serious. This council seriously wants to know what you young people think. So give us your name and just what's on your mind.
So, I'm Ben. I live in Lake Elsinore, but I go to school in Marietta.
Right.
The meetings were canceled in Marietta.
No worries.
I love Old Town. Old Town Temecula is just, it just looks amazing. Don't tell Marietta that.
Marietta already knows. Thank you, Ben. Thanks for being here. Young lady, come on up. You can go, Ben, by the way. Everybody else has to stay, but you can go. Hi, what's your name?
Hi, my name's Daisy. Can I move this? All right, so really all I have to say is, I've been in Temecula since 7th grade. There was a point in time where I moved to Idaho, and I wasn't here. But when I did come back, I had this new appreciation, because honestly, I missed it. Because it may seem pretty, not to be offensive, boring to some people, but to me, I think it's somewhere where I've gained a lot of good memories and might want to stick around here after I turn 18.
Daisy, thanks for coming back.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
I think we have a new slogan. Temecula.
We're not boring.
Temecula, we're, we're, Temecula, we're not Idaho. Let's do it.
I like that. Young man, what's your name?
My name is Kyle Galey.
Oh, hold on, Kyle. Daisy, by the way, you can leave. Everybody else has to stay. I'm just messing with you. Go ahead. Go ahead, Kyle.
My family moved to Temecula to be closer to family and also to get out of a very competitive environment back in our old home. And what I really, you know, appreciate about Temecula is that it is a very nice, warm, and very welcoming city that I found, you know. Very just, I just love that the community is just so thankful and so happy. And, you know, you guys put a lot of appreciation into the community. I'm really thankful for that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Kyle. All right, give me two more. Two more, and we're out of here. Come on. Just two more. All right, this young lady's coming up. I need one more. Gut check, guys. It's no big deal. Come on up and talk to us. Hi, young lady, what's your name?
My name's Kaylee.
Hi.
Hey, Kaylee.
I've grow, I grew up in Temecula, so this is like my home. And like, I just like Temecula because it's like my home in like my community and my church has all like grown here. So it's like, this is the only place I really know. And I've been to other communities, and it's not as family-like, like we're a big, like, group of people. So, yeah.
Thank you, sweetheart, for coming up. Hey, young man, what's your name?
My name is Bryce Evans.
Hi, Bryce.
I think you're old time's better than Marietta, because I come from Marietta, but I'm also very appreciative of the pump track that's going to be built in Temecula. So, I'm going to enjoy that.
Awesome. Thanks for coming out and, and for speaking this evening. It took, all of you who did, it took a lot of guts. I think we're good to go. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.